Okay, we'll open the meeting to the public. No public here, so we'll just continue that for a minute. Do you have the minutes for the meeting September 4th? Anyone note any errors or omissions?
Take a motion to accept the minutes as written?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, bills are sent, are there any additions?
No, no deletions either.
Okay, any comment from board on bills?
I have a question, hopefully, it's for wastewater treatment plan, hopefully Mr. Pelkay can answer this question. Brian, from GP Jagger Incorporated, seventy thousand three hundred and seven dollars, stainless steel hollow, and all it says is S afterwards. What is that?
It's one of the propellers for the aerators.
For the aerators, okay, just the propeller, right?
It could be the shaft, I know we ordered the shaft and a propeller.
Okay.
So we'll have one as a spare, so we get those other ones rewelded and rebalanced locally.
I know that our son probably has a way that you put your description down, but I'm just wondering if maybe a little more abbreviating can be used so we can get more of our description in there since you do have limited room?
Well, the actual description is stainless steel hollow shaft and propeller for a ten horsepower aerator. Holster star.
Yeah, you'd never get all that information in there, I'm sure.
Well, I understand.
You know, stainless steel, you could go SS and then something.
I share your concerns about this, I'm not, I've never been happy with the bills the way that they are now. But I understand that we're in the middle of getting a new program, our son, our grandson, and that is gonna fix, well, we'll make sure that when we adopt it because, like, I see no point in having the same date, a whole column of everything the same date for today. Either have the date when it was bought, or don't have it at all, eliminate, you know, the column.
Yeah.
We used to have it, it fit in better, so anyway, hopefully we'll get that straightened out before that new program goes into effect.
I know the part they're talking about in...
I'd also like to iterate, I'm sorry for interrupting you, but iterate that the bills are put out on Friday, and if anybody has any questions, the board will welcome the call. You know, if something simplifies a description like that, the board will welcome the call, especially when you come in the office during the day.
Okay, thank you.
Take a motion to pay the bills?
No, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, bills are approved, correspondence, please?
We have two this evening, the first one is from the Dodge Memorial Library. Dear Mayor Batha and Village Trustees, the trustees of the Rousas Point Dodge Memorial Library voted to appoint Elise Briet to the position of library page on an as needed basis. She already has an approved service application on file. Sincerely, James Giro, Library Board President, and per Susan Sullivan, they would like that effective tomorrow, and that's informational purposes. The next is also informational purposes from John Mott, owner of Barcoms Marina. Dear Ms. Boomel, in accordance with the Rousas Point Village Code, section fifty dash three, notification to village, I am reporting the number of mooring slips currently available for rent of Barcoms Marina as one hundred eleven. I will be submitting a joint application form to the US Army Corps of Engineer, the US Department of Environmental Conservation, and the New York State Office of Government Services requesting that permits be issued to allow the expansion of Barcoms Marina mooring slips to a total of one hundred ninety-six. Barcoms has three hundred and fifty parking spots, including those on the pier, and the remainder at the Mott Marine property located one hundred fifty feet from Barcoms Marina. Once I've submitted the above-mentioned joint application form, the village will receive notification thereof with the complete expansion details from New York State DEC. For clarification, I have attached a complete description of the proposed work, a survey drawing of the complete Barcoms Marina configuration, as well as a survey drawing of the proposed expansion. Due to the large investment required to complete this project, it will be phased in over a two-year period with a requested start date on or about June two thousand nineteen. Please let me know if you require any further information regarding this or any other matter related to Barcoms Marina. Respectfully submitted, John A. Mott, owner of Barcoms Marina. And that's all we have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I have the annual IEP meeting that I attended last year is on October twenty-third. I would like to go to it, but I would, I need to wait a few days to find out if I'll be available for that day, it's on October twenty-third, plenty of time. This is about, this is kind of important for me this year, as you know, on the IEP coordinator, because we lost our local representative from Saranac Lake who used to come up here and do all the home inspections and everything, and I'm dealing with guys over the computer and on the phone from south of Syracuse. And I'm not getting real good communications with him because he's charged like half of New York State or something, so it'd be good to have a face-to-face with him, work out the bugs on this. I think our, our situation with IEP is improving slightly, mainly because we haven't been using any of the funds lately. We've, I think we've funded all the outstanding requests that we had for energy conservation. We will be submitting bills for LED lights on the front of this building, and LED lights for the basement of the library as soon as they get the asbestos abatement taken care of. And we may be buying some additional streetlight LED light fixture ads. And Brian, do you, do you think anything else we're gonna be doing with IEP village-wide?
Mostly the bulbs that we talked about.
Yeah.
For the streetlights.
Right, yeah, I mean, we usually buy a dozen, then IEP buys a dozen.
Yes.
But I think we may be getting an additional dozen for ten or so from IEP for the other projects. So anyways, I guess I would like permission from the board to go with that, I think that's how we do it.
I'll make a motion that mayor attend the two thousand eighteen annual meeting in Syracuse with expenses for an overnight stay, the evening before, any travel expenses associated with it if he doesn't use a village vehicle, and any meals that he has to pick up with his wife.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I, I don't know, the other thing I am a little concerned about here is it says nine thirty to twelve thirty, and then it says, uh, the meeting agenda will follow. And it seems to me when I went last year, it was like there was more to it than just the morning, I think it went, I think we had stuff either the night before and then it went all the next morning, or it went all day the next day. It seemed to me there was more than just a half a day.
Yeah, I think that's usually a two day.
Well, or at least a full eight hours fit in there somehow.
Let me open that motion back up, you have to stay to a second.
No, no, I'm not gonna stay a second day, it's good, I'm just gonna stay the Friday night, or the night before.
Night before.
But I'm just wondering if they got more going on.
All right.
I'll have to check into that with them. Okay, thank you. Best practices, is this about, uh... Okay, we have, uh... Steve, would you like to brief us on this, best practices?
No, I have not received this, this is the first time I've, I've got.
Oh, okay.
It's a three-hour session that Emergency Services, Glen County Emergency Services is putting on this year, and they're, they gear, they gear this towards our fire department officials, and also it's the intended audience for this presentation is for any authority having jurisdiction representatives, commissioners, mayors, trustees, supervisors, and town hall members. It's on September eighteenth at seven to ten PM. It talks, it talks about the best practice program, provide information to the authority having the jurisdiction, as well as the fire department goal of this program is to have a safe working environment for our first responders. The program includes training standards, PES regulations, vector practices, and common violations.
Do you say did look at the, do you know where it's gonna be located, because on this it says to be announced?
It says, it says the date is tonight, so I have no...
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night?
Yeah.
Sorry, okay.
I'm assuming it's gonna be at, at their office at sixteen Emergency Services Drive in Blackford.
Chief LeBlanc, are you going to attend that?
I believe it was canceled.
It was canceled?
I'm looking through my email now for you.
Okay.
I believe it's canceled.
Well, okay, in the event that they reschedule, would anyone from the board like to attend that? I don't think there's any cost at all to it.
Yeah, no, I think we can.
Pick up the village car and go down there.
Yeah.
So just let us know who's going. Okay. Okay, the next item of business we have is fire department grant request. Fire department did all the paperwork to apply for a grant, and we got it, seventy-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-one dollars, and it requires a match of three thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars, which, well, is in the fire department budget, because some of the items I believe that are in the grant is budgeted separately, because we had to have them whether they got the grant or not got the grant. Isn't that it? No?
There's things I applied for that are normally budgeted, I applied for some hose.
Yeah.
So we have an account for hose and nozzles.
Yeah.
Which would cover that, and then there's some safety gear in there, which we have an account for safety equipment.
But is that in the grant?
Yes.
That's what I'm talking about.
But it's not, specifically not budgeted.
I thought it was.
No, that was cut.
Okay, I'll...
Anyway, the fire department has the money.
We have a general account for fire hose, and in the grant I applied for fire hose.
Right.
So that's where the money can cover.
That's what I'm talking about, that's specifically what I'm talking about.
There were other items that I requested that were...
Yeah, I remember, well, as I remember when we were working on that budget, didn't we, one grant fell through, not this one, but you got word that you weren't gonna get one of the grants, so we took, we took it out of the budget? We had it set up, like, all the stuff from the grant.
Last year's I didn't get.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the application for this grant actually opened again next week.
Uh-huh.
For this year's, so this is last year's.
All right.
Grant process from FEMA.
Okay, we'll work that with our son, then I'm...
I provided our son with some account numbers.
Okay.
Where that money would come from, or could come from.
So do we need a motion to...
Ah, yes, we need a, a motion to accept the grant.
I'll make a motion to...
And pay the...
Fire department, accept the grant.
And, and provide the matching funds.
And provide the matching funds.
Okay, no second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to thank Chief LeBlanc for writing these, applying for and writing these grants.
Yes.
As you're aware of, in fiscal times, in these days, and, um, that goes, that goes a long way, and it's kind of a rarity to see a department head be able to write grants to begin with, and to apply for them and as many as you've got. And on behalf of the board, I want to thank you very much for, for doing this for the village of Rousas Point.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we have an amendment to the procurement policy, and all this is, is reflects the change in, uh, the resignation of the chief wastewater plant operator and replacement by the new wastewater plant operator, Danny Gay. We need a motion, I guess, do, we need a motion for that, and a motion to delete Tim Graves and add Daniel Gay for, and then, are we adding all these other ones on there too? Okay, then we're gonna add Grant Dean, Jeremy Gay, and David Carter, the last two being in the water treatment plant, as responsible for purchasing. So I need a motion for that.
So move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, I have a letter that we just received, and I will read it here in a minute. Okay. Dear Mayor, please accept this letter as notice of my resignation from my position as code enforcement officer. My last day of employment will be October second, two thousand eighteen. After five years of serving our community and after careful consideration, I realize that it is time for me to start enjoying some free time and doing things I have been wanting to do for years. It has been a pleasure working with you, Mr. Mayor, and our trustees, and past mayors and trustees over the past five years. Mr. Mayor, thank you again for the opportunity to work for the village of Rousas Point as your code enforcement officer. Signed, Clifford Sterling. I understand when Clifford first got on this, he wasn't working other places, and now he's working full-time, and this was getting to be too many hours for him, I think, on top of his other jobs, so I would like a motion to accept his resignation with regrets.
So move?
Second.
No motion and a second, except with regrets, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Donna, would you send him a, a letter in response to this, to what we just said?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and then I want to announce that we've received a payment from the Sheriff's Department for sale of firearms from our old police department. As you know, when we abolished the police department, we turned in the armory to the Sheriff's Department, and they sold the guns, they, they kept four shotguns, I guess, and they, they sold the guns to a federally licensed dealer, and we got checks, totally a little over two thousand dollars for them. There was eight, eight pistols together, they were worth about three hundred and three hundred and fifty dollars apiece, depending which model it was. So that's what they did. We also gave them, um, one police car that, that town hall, and then, of course, everything that was in the, in the station, they took to it. So that's all I have, trustee Arnold is absent tonight, trustee Dirk.
As it is, trustee Arnold called me, and he wants to speak on behalf on a couple, three items, I'll start with his before I get to mine. He'd like to see if we could, up front here, if we could stripe the front row along the grass parking spots, and then immediately behind that, stripe another row. And I guess what the intention would be if you striped just one row beyond that, people that pull in will line up, will generally line up with a car in front of them. Because during hockey games, some, some skating programs, and sometimes other uses here, um, year-round, the parking lot gets pretty plugged out there. We, we know that we have showed up here many a Monday night during the winter time, and there's no place to park for us for a seven o'clock. And I've seen, and I know trustee Arnold has commented, how people will park and, you know, will take a car and a half space instead of whatever. We don't have any safety lanes out there either.
That's my big concern, is getting the ambulance in and out of here.
That's it, you know, we should have a dedicated safety lane on each side, an entrance and an exit.
I think it's pretty much along here, and I think if they had to take anybody out, they'd come out through one of these side doors, pretty much. I mean, that seems to be, you know, getting somebody off the ice, and, uh, because you're trying to swing around the front here, and make like a horseshoe turnaround here and go back out is tight. You know, because there's always somebody at the last parking spot where you want to make a left turn to go out, that you can't make a left turn in a big truck.
Like I said, if you, if you stripe the first row beyond the building, stripe in front of the building, then you stripe beyond the building, the first row, cars should line up in those, in those, and cars should pull in behind them and not, you know...
My, my only concern with that, was I talked to Ben about it myself the other day, and the only concern that I have is, when are we scheduled to pave this parking lot? If we've done it fairly recently, then let's paint it, but if we're gonna be paving it the next, say, couple of years, maybe we should wait till we pave it, then paint it, and paint the whole thing.
Brian, do we own a striper machine?
No.
You know, and the one that's here at the recreation center, that's just for striping fields, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, so, we don't have the equipment to do it ourselves.
You can. You can do, you can stripe it.
Oh, very easily.
With the, with the field one, because we do it at school.
Okay, so you've done, well, there.
We could stripe them in blue paint, too.
Well, blue's handicap.
Yeah.
Well, we got five cases of it, with that vertical, that vertical nozzle.
Not hot paint.
Yeah, we got a lot of blue paint.
So you wanted me to just bring that up, second thing is, with low water, everybody...
Well, let's, let's act on this a little bit. Don, Brian, do you know, when are we thinking about paving this parking lot?
Within the next two years, it needs it.
Yeah, I thought it did. Let's see if we can, can we look into, we've got the, the machine that they'd strike the lines with, right?
Do they use paint, do they use paint for the lines?
Out here, yes.
Use paint?
Yes, it's a white upside down.
I thought they used to use like lime or something for those.
They used it with the line, but we, we paint the line at school also, but we did use it to paint all our, our lines.
So why don't we just look into a couple cases of paint, see if we can do it ourselves?
Did you do the yellow or the white?
White.
You did the white at the school?
Yeah.
We can try it, I mean.
Okay, let's, let's go ahead and try that, see how it looks.
We did some yellow, some white, so I mean, you know, you just have to, but you can do what you have, you know, as long as there are lines, you know, people will follow lines.
Wouldn't you see yellow better, wouldn't you see yellow better in the winter time?
You would. You know, you just, I mean, like us, we had to, you had to clean the paint machine when you, you know, do from the yellow to the white, you know? So, yeah, either one, I mean...
Does it take aerosol cans, or?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Yours takes aerosol can?
Yes.
You can, yeah, you still can do it. We did, we did, I did some of them up there myself, with the aerosol, you just got a little, just a little machine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Four wheels on it, you walk behind it, push button, makes a lot.
Some stringy down, yeah. Okay, we'll try to do that as much as we can.
Okay, that'd be nice.
We can give it a shot, anyway.
Our village on boat ramp, the water is considerably low right now. Need the fire department, damage to trailer backing off of it.
Pulling back in, yes.
Pulling back in.
Off the end, yeah.
Yeah, how is it, if you'd launch your boat, I've heard several concerns about people not being able to launch their boats.
I haven't been down to look at it, Tom, so I can't tell you, I wasn't there that day, I was at work, but I understand it's low, and they went off the end, and there was a hole there or something that they, that tigers got caught in.
Trustee Arnold was hurt from the coast guard, they use it occasionally, but they can't use it now because it's low, and what trustee Arnold was talking about is, uh, we have, uh, forms that we use for, for park benches, for slabs. If the village would consider extending the ramp out by making some of those forms and just dropping them in the water right there, it'd be placed in with our backhoe.
We bought those slabs, they're, I went and looked at it after I, what happened is, people are putting their boats on the trailers, what do they call that, power pusher or something, they, they run the motor and push the boat up onto the, instead of cranking it on with a, you know, a, a winch thing.
Yeah.
They're just, and that's stirring up all the, all the dirt and the stones at the end of the thing, it's made a hole at the end of the ramp from doing that. The ramp, when it was designed, it was those, those slabs, I think are, I think they're four feet by twenty feet, it might be five feet by twenty feet. We had Sharon's cast them, which they used to be a company up here in the, I think in the Gamal World, were they? And they used to cast like vaults for, for cemetery vaults and stuff, and that's who made them. And they're, they're steel reinforced, and they were supposed to be, they were designed with a hole in each corner, and it was supposed to have a U-shaped piece of rebar put in there to hold them together, and the, the village crew installed them, but they never put those, those pins in there. So they started drifting apart, so somebody put chains on them, chains kind of holding together, but there's a couple of gaps in between, and, I don't know, I mean, the lot water is unusually low, if we wanted to put a couple more in, we could, I think, I think we had a crane that put those in. You remember that, Brian? Because I think, I don't think we had any kind of forklift that was big enough to lift those, because they're like six or eight inches thick, and they got steel rebar in them every six inches. But, so I'm saying it's probably, oh, I don't know, how much yards of cement would be in one of those, concrete would be quite a bit. Do you think we could make our own forms for that, or?
Yes.
If it's out of locum, you know, just pour the cement right there?
Well, we make the form at the end of the thing and push it over the edge, probably, right?
Make the parking lot, put plastic down, put the forms, pour them, put rerod in them, put the loops in them.
Well, how much is concrete a yard, sixty dollars or so, or?
Yeah, back in seventy. Hundred and twelve dollars a yard.
That's for the good stuff, the, the fireworks and stuff.
Four thousand, what we usually use.
So, I think, it's, it's gotta be about two yards of each one of those, huh? So you make, what do you want, two, extend it out eight more feet, I would think.
I was trying to hear that.
Well, the problem is, what you're saying is the boats are powered, powered, powering onto their trailer.
Yeah.
And they're taking all the debris that's in the bottom of the lake, and they're blowing it up into a pile, so there's, if you go out halfway down the docks, it's only about two feet of water, because all the debris is pushed out of that hole.
We got, will, will our backhoe reach out that far, you think?
Nah. What I was gonna try to do is take one backhoe, raise that slab up, and put some stone underneath it, and set it back down.
Uh-huh.
I was gonna get permission from you.
Okay, board want to put a couple, bill a couple of these and realign them, all the water's low?
Have you looked at it, Brian, see, do you think we need one or two, or do we need any?
I would go, I would fix what's there, and if you could pour two more, go out two more sections, it would be nice.
Yeah, I just think the village ought to make an investment as, as part of our...
Yeah, I mean, we have a good...
Our plan on, you know, we're, working on, you know, more thriving recreation center village.
Yeah, we've kind of been doing that all summer.
Right.
I think, like, big time.
This one's not much, it's a small one.
No.
Man hours and a little bit of cement, and it's gonna help the fire department get their boat in.
There you go.
It'll last for years.
And it's gonna cost us less to repair it.
Okay, let's make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we...
By two of those?
Make two of the extensions.
Slab extensions.
Repair what, your idea, what you're talking about?
First.
First, and then we'll drop a couple more out.
We'll put a couple more out farther, so they can run their trailers out farther.
Right.
Good.
Okay, have a motion, and then a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Another thing that Ben had, and I know that in the last five months, some people have talked to me about it, and I'm just bringing it to the, you know, the village's attention, I know we might have to change in ordinance in order to do this, but, um, a couple of the residents, intersection of Pine, Pine View, and Elm, we've got three stop signs there now, where all the streets come together. And nobody is really paying attention to the, the stop signs, and then you get three cars stopped there, it's, uh, who's gonna, who's gonna go? A solution to that would be, and like I said, we'd have to change the, we have to write this up, is to eliminate the stop from, from Pine, put a yield in off from Elm, and then leave the stop sign at Pine View. That way, you, you would have an orderly intersection.
Well, if you have a three-way intersection now, I don't know if it says three-way on it, we could add those on each, underneath each stop sign. Motor vehicle code says that the first one coming to the intersection on the right has the right of way, the same as any intersection.
No, I understand.
So I don't see any point in changing the signs around or anything, if people are just driving through it and getting in an accident, well, then they're gonna get a ticket, the same as violating any other sign.
I would say we just add the three-way to it, three-way stop.
If it isn't already there, I don't, I don't know, I mean, it's just that little, little sign underneath, you know, that goes underneath the stop sign. I mean, it's just that little, little sign underneath, you know, that goes underneath the stop sign. I'll, I'll see a problem there.
All right.
All right.
I'll, I'll get back to those guys and tell them.
Just like a thousand bucks to change them.
It was brought to our attention and talked about it in the ordinance.
I mean, if we, yeah, I, I, I think we're better off to leave the three stop signs there and just put, put three-way, three-way stop, so that way everybody knows it's, they have to stop and then they can go order.
All right, thank you. As the board's aware of, uh, for a couple months now, I'm thinking about coming up with some kind of village alarm response systems for hours that our, uh, our water plant is no longer open, eleven to seven. As far as chlorine alarms, failure pumping alarms, uh, sewer plant, whatever else. Mr. Phelps, he's had some discussion with the Clinton County Office of Emergency Services and Kelly Donnie, who was the assistant director there. Spence suggested to us that it is possible for, for no fee, that we, we could, we might be able to hit Clinton County to handle any dial-up alarms that we have, because they have a way of paging out people to specific pagers. Like if they want to page out specifically Brian to something, they've got a way of doing that without sending on page to everyone. And I'm talking about this tonight because it would be a free service to us versus the answering service that I've been proposing that, that we hire. Now, what we'd have to do is the village would have to send a letter to the director, Eric Day, and let him know what, what we're doing, what we want to accomplish as far as being notified by alarms. And they would make a determination whether or not they could handle that for us and. It would, it would all depend on what we want them to do, how we want them to do it, and how much they, they would have to cover. Right, right now, we've got pump stations, um, and we also have an alarm for, one or two other things right at the, see if that, we have.
Well, that's always been covered by telemetry when they built it, right? All, all the sewer plant, the pump stations and a few things in the, in the treatment facility itself are automatic pagers, I think.
Right.
So we want to add a few more pagers to the water plant and then tie them into the same system that's whatever's doing the wastewater plant. Right?
What it is, what, what it is, is a dial-up system where you put a phone number in and it dials, uh, a first phone number, a second phone number, and it'll continue going through. So right now, if any sewer plant, wastewater plant, uh, calls are dialed up, it goes right to Danny's phone. And with the water plant, it'll go right to Brian Jono's phone, and then it goes down through a list, who's next to be called. For those, those two facilities.
Now, have we set it up in the water plant yet?
Yes.
He's bought that equipment?
Yes.
Okay.
It's all set up.
I thought we did all this about three months ago or so.
Right. Uh, I think what Tom is work, uh, working on is like.
Different way to dispatch.
Well, it's like if there's a power outage or if somebody has a plugged sewer at their house, or if they have a water main break. How do we, you know, not everybody knows me, which people do call me at home, I'm sure they call. I mean, the way I look at it is every trustee and most of the village employees here live in a section of town that is fed by a different feeder. So if you don't have power at your house, who are you gonna call? You should know if you have power or not.
Yep.
So that's the way I look at the electric system.
Well, the electric is, yeah, but, you know, we're talking about these unmanned stations where equipment is running with nobody there.
Right.
Yep.
And those are with a dial-up alarm that will dial right to their phones, their cell phones.
Has that ever been a problem?
I, I don't, I don't know if it's a problem or.
I mean, equipment-wise. Because the, the system of dialing up, that's the same thing that the county would do if they did it. They'd do the same thing. They'd have a list of one, two, three.
Names, yeah.
And that's what we're doing now.
I think, um, right now, they're trying to work the bugs out of the one for the water plant. Or like, uh, chlorine levels and, uh, high-flow water alarms that if we do have a water main break, you get a high flow, it's gonna call right away whoever's on that list, so we'll have to go and check it out, see what the problem is.
So, you know, the, the village is gonna have to still have some thought of what, what they, what they want to do for other emergencies, other things that I call, with these dial-up systems. And someday, you know, it's a sprinkle of coverage, you know?
Yeah.
You know, for some, we don't, we don't have any burial alarms now. We don't, we don't have any fire alarms in our buildings now, you know?
Yeah, we do.
What's that?
Yes, we do.
You do have what kind of alarms?
Fire alarms in our buildings.
In all of them?
Um, our substation, the village office, the library, the fire station, our village garage, my office, they're all.
Oh, this building, the water plant?
Uh, the water plant doesn't have it, or this building. The wastewater plant has fire.
They do?
Yes. And they're all through Altech Integrations where they'll dial me or, first they dial the fire department, then they dial my phone and they have a list that they go down through.
Okay.
So if you would like, when it comes budget time, maybe, uh, look into extending that same system into the two buildings that remain that aren't covered. This building and the, what's the other one?
Water plant.
Water plant.
Yeah.
I guess the water plant never needed one, cause it was manned twenty-four seven. Probably why they didn't do it, but.
It should have smoke and heat alarms in there, definitely.
Yeah.
If you have a motor malfunction, you would know.
Right. Yeah, so let's, let's do that as part of.
I'd like to also talk at, at budget time too about, uh, uh, sprinkle, sprinkle systems in some of these buildings that we have.
Well, I'll tell you one thing for sure is we're gonna put one of that fire station. I tried to put one in there in nineteen eighty-six and it was eight thousand dollars and the chief said, no, we don't need it. Whoever heard of them? His exact words were, whoever heard of a fire station burning down? Exact words to me.
Plenty have.
Yeah, and even around here, plenty of them have. So I, I wanna see if we can do that this year.
All right.
In next year's budget.
I'll put a couple things on the back burner, but I'll, uh, I'll continue to, uh, watch this and our need and bring suggestions forward. The other thing I got for tonight, I want to request an executive session to discuss the employment history of protected employee, employees.
Hey, have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That it?
That is, thank you.
Okay, trustee Bernard.
Um, all I have tonight is, uh, the twenty thou, two thousand eighteen summer final swim report. The town of Champlain had a very good summer instructional swimming program this year. They always had one lifeguard on deck duty and rotated their guards with one on deck and the others assisting with lessons and the patsies. Each session in the day had a different lifeguard on duty, never was a person on duty not doing what they were supposed to. The lifeguard and instructors were very conscious of safety and handled it very well. The lifeguard was always easy to identify and had proper equipment on them or close by. Safety and rules were consistently administered and were discussed very well during the lessons. The five instructions and instructors and their aides were very respectful and helpful with their participants and parents. The two separate three-week sessions seemed to work for them. The number of participants would just about make it impossible to do one six-week session for the, for all. The pool could not handle the total number of participants we had this year. Lessons were well organized and instructors stayed on task using their lesson plans each day and the session. They need to in order to accomplish giving the participants the amount of new information they got in the three weeks. So overall, I feel they had a very good program and a very good staff. Thank you. And that's all I have for this.
All right. Uh, I just know. Now, do I need an executive session for union contractors? It's an old.
It's an old one.
That's what I thought. Okay. Trustee Obon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first item on my agenda is, uh, I believe everybody's got the, uh, the information technology upgrade, uh, quote and description of work that, uh, the administrators Peters has put together with our IT vendors. And I would like to, uh, get a motion to approve that work so we can, uh, for two purposes. One is to harden our email system and our IT infrastructure. And the second, I think, is, uh, to, we can improve some of our communications using some new software that will have available to us as, uh, as, well, I think it will prove effectiveness, uh, administrators use some of this software in other places and it opens up a wide range of new opportunities for us. Uh, primarily though, obviously, is the, the hardening of our email system and our infrastructure. I, I don't want to be in a position where we're in a, uh, in a hostage situation and this has happened to a number of these valleys where they've had to basically buy their way out.
Just happened to Wendell's Furniture.
Wendell Furniture, two, you know, a few months ago. It was, I, the, the amount that they paid was not released, but I believe it was significant. Plus the fact that you don't have your computer information and God knows if you'll ever, you know, be on hostage again. So, I mean, we can't have perfection, but I think we can at least have a, an email system that's a lot more hardened where most of the threats will come from.
Mr. Chair, what do you think about this, these thoughts on, on this here?
Oh, I, we definitely need it. I mean.
Do you have any money, board?
It's, it's part of, you know, it's part of, um, moving over from new websites.
Yeah.
Uh, our current email is being hosted by the company that hosted our website, so it's kind of, you know, out of the ballpark now, so it's, it definitely needs it.
You know, if I understand these figures, we're currently paying twenty-six hundred and fifty-four dollars a year. And this new system would be, uh, is it twenty-one sixty-three plus eighteen forty for the startup?
No, it's, uh, the total would be forty-eight hundred and eighteen dollars, twenty-four cents. Would be what we would end up paying annually versus what we currently pay annually, which is twenty-six hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Yeah, well, what I'm getting at is,
Well, money would have come up with this year.
Twenty-two hundred dollars, but I'm saying to set this thing up right now, gets twenty-one sixty-three increase plus eighteen forty?
Yeah, it's gonna take us eighteen hundred dollars, eighteen hundred and forty dollars to get this set up. Once, so that's paying the services.
Plus four thousand and three dollars extra unbudgeted to do this right now. And the next year it'll be, uh, it'll be.
Twenty-one sixty-three.
Twenty-one sixty-three pro-rated.
Pro-rated, so it's a little less.
Less than that, we can do the math on that if you'd like.
All right.
Well, if we go for this, I just want to know how much the total could cost us like right now till, till the next year's budget.
We're just figuring, cap lighting as we.
That's right.
And just while I fill in, uh, the second part of this, I do want to upgrade some of our computer equipment. I know it's on budgeted, so I'm gonna wait till the next budget year.
Yeah.
And do an inventory and then, uh, they'll be, we'll do, do inventory of what we have in the village and, and upgrade to a minimal standard for, since some of the equipment out there is just close to junk.
A lot of it is junk. A lot of the used stuff they got here, and we have way more than we need too, I think.
I mean, we've got a spare desk downstairs where our clerk used to sit and I use it at least once a week to print stuff off because I get emails from the village and stuff from the village and I can now, the village office now imprudent because of the costs. And I'm working at a computer that crashes every four minutes and I'm just wondering why we can't have a working tower hooked up to that system down there.
I don't know, I'd like to, this winter when we do the budget for that line, I'd like to go through all the computers we have and see how many we actually need.
That's true.
And how many we actually have. And how old they are, you know?
In fact, you need an inventory and that's how you know which ones we have.
Because I know, I know the last administrator must have got a bunch of used computers and just sprinkled them all over the place. And when you do that, all of a sudden you've got people that never had computers before now have them. And then a year or two later, somebody stuck with buying a brand-new one to supply a new computer to somebody that never had one before in their job. Same thing as getting a used car free from someplace and then a couple, give it to somebody that never had a vehicle, and then the next thing you know, you're looking for forty thousand dollars to get another one.
Well, I want to ask our senator question because he's sometimes helped me out at that, uh, when I've been trying to work at that workstation. Do we have a problem with the desktop unit itself, or do we have a problem in the line, do you think?
The one that you use, you mean?
Yeah, the one I use at the, uh, that spare desk downstairs with village office.
I think, I think it's probably a computer, I mean, wasn't it, isn't that a used computer from somewhere? Yeah, that's one of those ones we bought from the county for fifty bucks. Are all the ones? There's a reason why the county sold, got rid of those.
They were all there. They're all asleep.
Cause they rebooted before.
Yeah.
They were worn out, not asleep.
They should have never taken them.
And I don't know why they bought them. All of a sudden, they just showed up one day.
Well, you know who did it?
Who's not here or something.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Just another thing we're trying to fix.
So we, we, we don't have another unit somewhere else that we can put on that desk?
There's two in my office. There's two more from the four that was purchased.
Yeah, but the same thing you have now.
Right.
Try it.
Drop the other one.
Throw them out, you know, try one. If it doesn't work, throw it out and get rid of them all.
Ryan, I'll stop by and pick one up?
Yeah.
And I'll, I'll take it down there personally and try it.
Cause, uh, one was going to John and one was going to the electric department and they're both still in, if you go through the doors, right there on top of that gap, there's two towers there.
Yeah, we'll see if, you know, if it's a tower or what the, what the problem is, because it's awful frustrating when, you know, I've opened up these programs and stuff. I've been doing more research on solar and, uh, you get a program opened up.
Crashing.
And it, and it crashes, then you've got to sign back in, you've got to use, uh, whatever else, or if you're trying to print something, then you've lost everything.
Yeah.
So.
All right. So what do you call it?
Thirty-two hundred and eighty-two dollars would be the pervert share if we started October one.
And the next year it will be less though, right? Cause it would have that eighteen hundred and forty dollars startup fee of it.
Yeah, and our senator and I were just talking, there might be a little room in the website account because we budgeted something.
I had originally budgeted ten pounds of dollars and the cost was a five for itself.
Okay, uh, need a motion if you like to approve trustee Obon, Obon's proposal to do the perimeter protection and, uh, email protection?
I think a motion that we, uh, we get perimeter protection and email protection, um, on the system. As soon as we can and also if we can continue with the coverage for such protection, either with this provider or some other provider for our next budget year and, and so forth. Have, have a rail line item.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Probably should have put the amount in there, but thirty-eight hundred dollars is what we're hoping.
Okay, uh, can I amend that? The amount for this year is, is what, thirty-eight hundred dollars?
Uh, thirty-two hundred and eighty-two dollars.
All right, thank you. All right. Uh, you know, we, our son will make that as a regular budget line item.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. It's a monthly expense, I assume.
Right, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, my second item has to do with, uh, information that actually I found out about at the fire department meeting. And I think it pertains every food service provider at the county where the county health department is proposing a mandatory training course at their headquarters uh, in order to discuss food safety, which is exactly what they do when they come for their onsite visits. This wasn't received well at the fire department, cause they, they do three food service events a year. And I think it applies at a church function, any forum that provides foods. And frankly, we discussed it at the fire department as to the, the value added in having people drive to platform, paying the money, cause a hundred and thirty dollars per person. Well, how many people do you need this, you know, because if that trained person would have to be onsite, it's, and this is just another example where I think where government grows for no apparent purpose. And I am opposed to this, uh, certainly the fire department was opposed to it. I would think that a lot of food service vendors will probably be opposed to. And I oppose to this, uh, certainly the fire department was opposed to it, and I would think that a lot of food service vendors will probably be opposed to it. I haven't heard of it yet. I, I would like the, the village to send a letter to the, the, kinda, health department, saying that we're in opposition to this, because there's no move to value added.
Well, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that, but I think we should be responding to something we've received, and we haven't received anything yet.
Well, it's not to tell us we're not a food service provider, but the fire department has received.
Well, they're, they're a department of ours, if a department of ours provided food.
Yeah, Mr. Christie Arnold had, does have the paperwork he got, cause he, he was applying to attend the meeting, to bring it up himself.
How soon is this gonna happen?
Well, it's just a proposal right now, so there's no.
Well, what I was gonna say is, if we get a copy of this, uh, received by us, in the administrator's clerk, and then we can respond to it at the next board meeting, what our response is gonna be, which is probably negative. And that would be the proper way to do this, because right now, we're just doing it on a kinda hearsay thing, you know?
Well, now, we'll get the paperwork, because the, the fire department did receive it, they got the paperwork, and of course, it created quite an uproar.
Yeah, I, I understand that, I'm, I'm not disagreeing at all, I'm just saying.
But Christie Arnold did have the paperwork, cause I thought he intended to be here, is not, so we can get that, a copy of that letter from the health department.
I can inquire, if you'd like, with the director of public health, and just get some more information and pass it on, that would help.
Yeah, because I, you know, if, what they're saying is, I would wanna go on record as opposing something like this, but we gotta, we gotta have something formally to oppose, we can't just go by just hearing, hearing about it, you know?
So, have that for the next meeting, I'm sure.
Right, okay, that'd be fine. Anything else?
Uh, no. But yeah, but no.
Okay, uh, there's no public here? Uh, you said, okay, so, you know, need to recess?
Well, we all do reports, Ryan, and whoever else. Treasurer, our administrator, our clerk?
I got my things split in half here.
Okay.
I don't wanna run a meeting, Tom.
Thank you.
Uh, Donna, do you have anything else?
I have nothing, thank you.
Steve?
Uh, just applied for a Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative grant for ice skates for this facility. I know we budgeted, uh, for at least some of that, so I'll keep you posted on how that goes. Should be a few weeks. Um, and, uh, there's been a number of interesting phone calls coming our way, just with businesses being interested in our area. Not hardly anything to talk about yet, but I just thought it was encouraging to keep hearing some of that, so, you know, I wanted to pass that along, there's interest, and, you know, what we're doing here seems to be a good thing. Oh, yeah.
All right, our son?
I don't have anything.
Ryan?
Just an update on some of the projects that are going on. Smith Street, we're working on some of the sidewalks and the storm drains up there, the trip hazards. So we're trying to get that finalized this week. The leg department, they're doing various projects throughout the village, building maintenance. And we've already been getting calls about when our fall pickup. Our fall pickup is gonna be October twenty-second through the twenty-sixth. That's the week before Halloween. So, you gotta let the leaves bloom off the trees first.
It's the way to turn colors, huh?
So we always pick it up the week before Halloween, so. If anyone asks, that's our, our pickup.
Yeah, I have a little report that we've finished cleaning out the basement and the library today. The final, uh, three pallets of books went out. I have about seven hours myself in there, and they had out for a couple crews, mostly the electric crew hauling the books up the stairs and out the truck. And that's now ready for the asbestos abatement. I haven't heard any word back on what the figures are gonna be for that. Cause there was some problem with it, they got the grant, but the grant wasn't set up for prevailing wage rate or something. Now it's gonna be more, but I don't know. I haven't, I haven't heard anything. I, I asked her to talk to the administrator, find out if we're even required to do prevailing wage rate in this particular case. And I haven't heard from anybody back on that. Uh, I looked at it. It just, some pipes that had that covering over, I mean, my whole job be done two hours by one person, but who knows? Who knows?
Your, your, your cost is gonna be eleven thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Well, not necessarily. Is that new from like the last couple of days?
Yes.
Okay, cause that's what the original grant was for.
The original grant was for ten thousand and seventy-two dollars.
So it was over a thousand more.
Prevailing wage is required in this case.
Is it because he's got helpers, or?
Yes.
The other thing is, they had a, an oil painting that was on loan. The library, the village crew hog it, using a stick-on hook. And over the weekend, it fell off and ripped a hole in the oil painting. That doesn't belong to us. So the estimate to repair it is over four hundred dollars. So, we're gonna have to be faced with that, I think. It may have to, we may have to divert some other funds to the library to cover that.
They got, they've got a board that can determine that, right?
Yeah, but the board doesn't, the money comes from us, it doesn't come from them.
Well, I realize that, but Mayor Letourneau reminded us time and time again that, uh, once we give them their, give them each budget, it's up to them how they spend it. I don't know if that's still fact or not.
Well, it is, except that when something comes up like this, I think we're gonna get drawn into it, but I'm just giving you guys a heads up on it.
Uh, books all boxed up and gone?
Yeah. Got hours and hours and hours in that basement.
Trustee Arnold did, uh, wanna mention that, too, he wanted to make sure, uh, he, he did. Trustee Arnold didn't wanna see any of the books go into a dumpster?
Yeah, they all did. What they did was, they sold all the ones that they could sell this summer. They sold like a thousand dollars worth of books. And the ones that were left were ones they had two different guys come up and, and look at them, book dealers, and said they were interested in. And they were just scattered all over that basement, bulked in boxes, dumped over. Several cases did go out, we found holes for them, but mostly they got thrown out. So, it was unfortunate, cause I hate to see a book thrown out, but they were mostly like advanced novels and stuff like that, you know? Anyway, that's what happened. Uh, that's what the li, the library directed that that be done with. Okay, nothing else? Need a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion, we temporarily adjourn, adjourn, recess, and, uh, motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor?